First, I'd like to ask if you could silence your cell phones, if you would please. Hey, if we could please stand for the prayer and the pledge.
Father and heaven, we thank you for letting us all be here safe and sound tonight. Lord, it's beautiful weather. We've enjoyed it. And we thank you for keeping us all safe and sound. Those that are not safe and sound, Lord, ask that you be with them and you comfort them and heal them as you know the need. Tonight, we're gathering to do the people's business, Lord, and ask you give us wisdom, mercy, above all else. Give us mercy and show us the right path to take that would please you in the things that we do. We ask you to go with us as we leave afterward also, and ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the September 4th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. And this is our regular meeting on this Thursday evening. We'll start with our zoning. And the first thing I'd like to state, if this will be a rather lengthy meeting. So if you can keep your statements to a concise just subject matter. And I know it's a lot of things you get into that's very passionate and things you want to make sure everyone knows. But if you could just consider that. And if there's multiple people speaking on more than one behalf of one project. If you try to have one representative possible, if not still, if you would just be mindful of that. I know as a general rule, we try to keep it to three minutes or less. So if you'll just make sure you have your thoughts organized. And that way that we can get through this in a reasonable manner. Because if you're first or second, it's great. But if you're last, it's not so much. So if y'all would just keep that as a consideration, appreciate it. Can we call the roll, please? Mr. Engler?
Here.
Mr. Clemmons?
Here.
Mr. Erdy?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Wax?
Here.
Mr. Dana?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Ferris?
Here.
Ms. Long?
Here.
Okay, item number five, we have adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 7th, 2025. Do you have a motion on that?
I'll second it.
Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Dana. Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Erdy?
Abstain.
Mr. Guidry?
Abstain.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long? Yes. Moving to item number six, that is about the public input time limited discussion. And that's something I mentioned earlier. Do you have anyone on the commission that wanted to add to that?
So I had requested that this be added to the agenda for us to talk about whether or not we wanted to implement a time limit on public comments. So most of the other parish boards, commissions have a three-minute limit per individual that comes up to comment. So the parish council works the same way, the school board, the library board. So I'd just like to propose implementing a similar time limit per comment. As y'all can see, our agenda tonight is pretty long, and I think it's actually shorter than our previous two agendas, which have been three and four-hour meetings. So just trying to streamline some of these longer agendas.
Absolutely.
So that would be my recommendation. I don't know if we need to vote on that as a commission, or if there's any other comment on that that anyone would like.
Anyone else? Mr. Burns?
I agree with what you're saying, but when the developer comes to make a presentation, not be limited.
So my suggestion would be we do the same for the developers. But obviously, when we're asking them questions and waiting on answers, we're not going to hold them. We're not going to count that against them. But in their initial comments, presentation, I would want to hold them to the same time limit that we're holding the public input to.
They should be afforded an opportunity to present their development to us in detail and not be limited to three minutes.
Any other comments? I think primarily it's for public input because it's multiple speakers. Now, if y'all would like to kind of split the difference and see how it goes with the developers. Usually, they're not. It's not real lengthy. Mr. Clemmons?
I really think our biggest problem is people that keep returning the microphone. Once they've been to the microphone once, sorry. You either got it done, or you forgot something. But three and four trips to the microphone is killing us on time.
Well, I do think one thing in that regard, and you're right, many times it's just to come up and follow up. But if something does arise by someone else's comment that they need to address. I think we, you know, it's that we can then allow that as a response only to whatever the subject matter was. Is that something that y'all would be in agreement with? That they would, we would have to grant them the ability to speak again if it has merit in regard to what decision we have to make. Sometimes it's just a comment in general that really has no bearing on the subject matter specifically. It just might be their opinion or something that they want to share, but it still has no bearing on the subject that we are actually having to address. And at that point, we would have to ask them to be seated. But anything that would be pertinent information that might have been brought up by the developer or whomever. I think it would be fair for us to accept a response if it warranted a response.
I would agree, but at the same time, it's not responding back and forth where it becomes.
Oh, I agree. And don't talk with each other. Address the board.
More of a developer, developer or whomever is able to answer a question back and forth, not individuals. I've got to come back and answer this back where it becomes back and forth.
It turns into an argument.
To start with, each and every person here should be speaking to us, not back and forth to one another. So the questions should be directed to us, or a statement that should be directed to us. If we have a question about it, that'd give the opportunity to reach out to either side of the conversation and for us to ask them. It shouldn't be back and forth, responding back and forth. It should be to this commission.
And ultimately, that's all within Ms. Long's purview and discretion as the chair.
And I agree with three minutes each person and keeping it on different subjects, not the same subject each person, three minutes.
I don't know. I guess we could ask legal, could we make a motion on doing something like this now and vote for it and go forward?
Do it as a resolution?
What, resolution?
You have a right to control your procedures. So you can make a rule that applies to people that speak, as long as you don't apply it in a discriminatory way.
Okay. Does that have to be voted on officially, or just the conversation we've had is satisfactory?
I think the answer to that is you could probably do it either way. If you're going to rigidly enforce it, you'd probably need to vote on it. If it's a kind of a consensus deal, you can, you as the chairman, have authority to tell them, well, our practice is that you have three minutes. And, you know, if went to get to the end of the three minutes, tell them that they are at the end of the three minutes.
All right. I think what I might be most comfortable with is tonight, we've established this with the group that's here. And then perhaps at the next meeting, make it more formal. And we can put it on the agenda and actually make sure that it's composed properly and take a vote if y'all are in agreement with that. Getting my clock out. Okay.
Please, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. All right. So moving on to item number seven. We're going to open the public hearing. These are rezoning requests. And so I'm opening the hearing on case number 25-38 at 9102 Dabney Drive. That's parcel number 0093302. It is two lots that are R1 and C1, and it's Council District 4. Do we have anyone here to represent that particular subject matter? So again, Dabney Drive. So is there anyone there here to represent that? Okay. All right. We'll close the public hearing on that item. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission regarding this?
I think this is more of the same thing in that area where a lot of properties have been used for business historically. Have gotten zoned as residential, and we're just doing a little cleanup here.
Yeah.
Same as the ones beside it, right?
Yeah.
Having said that, though, is there anything to prevent them from continuing with their commercial use of the property today? Because it's, the area around it is all clearly zoned R2.
What it will affect is their ability to borrow money against their property. If they want to do any improvement of the grounds, the business is not zoned properly, then it will affect them at the bank.
That's the same as a couple in the past. We did the same thing.
Absolutely correct, yes.
It's already being used conditionally. I think they're just trying to get it correct, like you said, right? Cleanup.
Yes. Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
What business is being conducted there right now?
Looks like OK Auto Sales, and it's got computers there also. OK Computers on the last photo all the way down.
He's been there for years, and that's that whole road along Cochrane. Every one of them were zoned R2 because it was part of Maryland subdivision when they built it.
This is Brian Ross's.
Yes, Brian Ross. And he's just wanting to clean it up like the other three that y'all have done already.
Disgusted that every month we clean up one, and we say, yeah, we still have several more in this little corridor here we have to clean up. But this Brian Ross, he's run for council. He's very active in helping us out.
All right, Ms. Kathy, are you?
Okay. Nope, just if there's any more, I just want him to finish his comment. So, hey, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Mr. Dana, seconded by Mr. Engler. You can take a vote, please. Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Erdy?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long? Yes. Now move on to number 7B. I'll open the public hearing for case number 25-39 at 10075 Hemisphere Lane. Parcel number 0065482. Two lots, R2 to R1, Council District 5. Do we have anyone here to speak in regard to this project or zoning request? If you'll please come to the podium individually and state your name and sign in, if you would, please.
My name is Linda Garafola, and I just have a short letter to read, please. To the honorable members of the Livingston Parish Planning Department. We, the residents of Anna Margaret Lane, respectfully submit this letter in opposition to the rezoning request for the property located at 10075 Hemisphere Lane, from residential R2 to residential R1. While we understand the property owner's desire to provide separate housing for their adult child, we firmly believe this rezoning would have a significant and detrimental impact on our community and the surrounding area. Our objections are based on the following critical concerns. One, undermining property values. The introduction of a mobile or manufactured home would not only devalue the specific property, but would directly threaten the financial investments we have all made in our homes. Multiple studies in real estate analysis, including those by the National Association of Realtors, consistently show that placing mobile homes in a single-family residential area causes a measurable decline in the value of surrounding property. Two, irreversible precedent and erosion of community character. Our neighborhood is defined by its single-family site-built homes. Granting this rezoning request would set a dangerous precedent, effectively opening the floodgates to similar requests. This would fundamentally alter the established character of our community, leading to a slow but certain decline in the quality of life and aesthetic appeal of our neighborhood. Three, straining public services. An increase in density, even a small one, will place an unnecessary burden on existing local infrastructure and public services, including water, sanitation, and traffic. This rezoning could lead to a precedent that strains these vital resources in the long run. We urge you to consider the long-term well-being and stability of our community and decisively deny this rezoning request. By upholding the current zoning, you will preserve the character and value of our residential neighborhood for all residents. Thank you for your time and serious consideration of this matter. Sincerely, the concerned residents of Anna Margaret Lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Haley. I'm with this. This is on the same subject. I don't know if that's another letter.
Sure, that's fine. Absolutely.
To the respective members of Livingston Parish Council, okay, my neighbor spoke to me about an individual property, and I'm here to address the idea of mobile home waivers as a whole. We are the residents of Anna Place Subdivision in Denham Springs in Livingston Parish. We appeal today to encourage you to consider how we are shaping and building our community for the future. We all appreciate in the wake of 2016, our government leaders worked effectively to solve a difficult problem for allowing temporary mobile homes. Residents who were rebuilding their lives and homes and communities showed immense strength and passion. Mobile home waivers were a good thing in 2016, but the flood is nearly over. It's been a decade behind us. We contend that to create a thriving, sustainable, and proud community that attracts businesses and enhances communities, we must shift our focus. We urge you to consider a new approach, one that invests our time, energy, and funds into projects that genuinely build and sustain a community that flourishes, stands out, and is the envy of other parishes in our great state by shifting our resources towards strategic development away from temporary solutions. We can shape a vibrant, sustainable community for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak on the subject? Right. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm the council rep for that area. So I represent all, both sides of this, or however many other sides there are to it. And I just want to give you some information. I do have a letter. I'm not sure if you all received it or not. I think it's got 11 signatures on it. Check 10. Okay, 10. Contesting this and strongly disagreeing with it. This subdivision was established in 1968 and is intact, stick-built. This also would need an additional waiver to pass. And I don't know if you all had time or attended the last council meeting. But we have some pretty substantial, serious waiver issues happening in our parish right now. And it is happening in the council meetings. My takeaway from what I understand from the council meeting is in R1, and check me on this because, all right, the attorney spoke to it in the council meeting. Not only would you, if this is granted and then the waiver is granted, this would open up R1 not only for this subdivision, but also for all R1 subdivisions. So just know that. That's a pretty big deal right now. We put all these things in place to protect our parish. Mobile homes in named subdivisions, you know, that came from 2016, from the flood. Our people needed help. Our houses were flooded. We had RVs. We had mobile homes, and the waivers just got to be too much. So the council made some changes to accommodate that, and now we're trying to draw the line in the sand along the line, the same lines as FEMA is doing with some things as well. But the mobile homes in the named subdivision is causing so much contention, division, and amongst the neighbors that it really is kind of heart-wrenching to see. So, you know, I represent both here. I'm just giving you that information so you have it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sanford, could you describe this neighborhood to us roughly how many homes and starter homes, second home?
I do not have that answer. Do you have any idea, Mr. Keen?
Looks like it's upscale homes. They're not starter.
Oh, yeah, it is. And.
Probably about 25 or 30 homes along Hemisphere.
I was figuring we have almost half of the neighbors that actually put a letter in, which is a lot, really.
Well, and I've gotten calls.
Homes, not starter homes by any means.
No, they're upscale, and I have gotten calls about it, contesting it, not just aside from the letter. 16?
16 on Hemisphere.
That's just on Hemisphere, but that's not the entirety of the subdivision.
Point being is that consideration of devaluation of property is warranted.
It is a concern, and I will tell you in my area, what I see happening, this is kind of the trend. So I have several older subdivisions that were established prior to 1970. They have maintained their value and integrity all these years. And the starter home, what I'm seeing is the people that want to buy starter homes are moving into these older neighborhoods because they can afford the houses, because the houses need to be brought up to date and renovated. And they're buying them, and they have voiced to me that they do not like the quality of some of the newer homes being built, and they prefer these older homes that have stood the test of time.
Correct.
And I hope they stay, but what I see them doing in these neighborhoods is really great. I mean, they're just doing all kinds of wonderful renovations, and it's just great to see it turn around. I liken that to, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Spanish Town in East Baton Rouge Parish around the capital. That had fallen into really, really hard times and was kind of falling apart. And now it's becoming a very nice place to live again, so.
It's flourishing, and I think it's generational. Like you say, now the younger groups are starting to buy some of these homes and remodel them, and that'll just progressively continue if it can maintain the value. So, thank you very much.
I have a question. Ms. Aaron? I hear, I don't disagree with anything you said. However, directly according to what I'm looking at on the plots, directly where these people are trying to put a mobile home at, right across the street is Lot 1, deep depth, and I can't read it on the measurement. I didn't pull up the map and see exactly. However, it's R1.
Yes.
In your ordinances, our ordinances from the council, R1 allows mobile home.
Yes.
So do they have HOA in these subdivisions?
Not this subdivision.
Okay. So if there's no HOA, and the people directly across the street wants to put a mobile home, according to the ordinances right now, they can do it.
I disagree.
Can I ask a question maybe off our point of clarification? Is the lot across the street part of the, is it Hemisphere Farms?
Yes.
It is.
It is, yeah.
It appears to me that Hemisphere Farms has restrictions on file against mobile homes.
I asked. That's what I'm asking.
Not an HOA per se, but there's restrictions.
Subdivision restriction.
There's subdivision restrictions that I see against mobile homes in the named subdivision.
Is there subdivision restriction?
Yes.
HOA, and are there, you know, they're actually supposed to be updated meetings yearly, right? And I'm just asking, if there's restrictions, great. If not, we cannot stop Lot 1 from putting a mobile home.
Well, if it's part of a named subdivision, then.
If it's R1, they can fight it civil.
But it's still part of a named subdivision, even if it's R1. Even if it's R1, the ordinance allow for it, except for if it's in a named subdivision. So because this is Hemisphere Acres, that part of the code doesn't allow for it, right?
That would be deed restrictions. Because we just had a case.
No, not deed restrictions.
Two months ago, we just, we just, two months ago, council had to do something on a waiver that it passed. I'm not, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, two months ago, they had to do a waiver. You know what I'm saying? To do a waiver for a subdivision in Denham Springs area. You know which one I'm talking about? Sure. Yeah, you do. We did the same thing. It was a waiver.
But it's.
But that was because somebody had already gotten one in that neighborhood. But in this neighborhood, to my knowledge, they're not.
If it's R1, it's parish allows.
But this is not R1.
If it's, no.
It does.
Across the street is. So that's what I'm, I'm just making a point.
The question is.
I understand.
So this is R2, so it can be, they can put like five or six homes on this lot.
Across the street.
What they're asking for.
They would still have to get a waiver for being in a named subdivision.
But there is an ordinance against mobile homes going in a named subdivision.
That's why I asked. The first question was.
Section 125137.
Is there restrictions? I don't have the restrictions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, they fought this one specifically last Thursday night on Beechwood.
It was pretty rough.
In Beaver Creek subdivision. But this one was discussed at length, including with our council. And it was heated at times.
It's disheartening to see neighbor against neighbor because we've got to uphold our own ordinances.
I don't think anyone doubts the need for that individual family. But you also have, like we say, 17 families whose investments and, and they, again, they, many people buy to have in a subdivision because it has the restrictions, so they are protected. And that, that protection would basically be given away at this point.
I did get a complaint from a young family, starter home family, that bought a home. They saved up their money. They lived in a mobile home. They saved up their money to buy a home. And they live in an older home now. And he made the comment that why, why, if you're going to allow mobile homes, why did I even save up my money? If you're going to put one in my, in.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So in this situation, in R2, would anything prevent them from building a pool house? You know, obviously, the reasoning for them was they wanted to put a mobile home for their adult child or whatever. But from what I'm understanding, they could easily just build another.
A permanent structure.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Right. Yeah, you know, I don't want to prevent them, you know, just thinking like if there's no other option, but obviously.
Yeah, but it is an alternative.
Right, okay.
Okay. If, that's all. Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from the public? I'm going to close that public hearing. If, Mr. Keen, if you have anything to add from your department?
No, I think everything's been said. Ms. Aaron's correct, and, you know, and you asked about everything you need to know. I think it kind of was puzzling to me that half of it was R2 and the other half was R1, same thing that Norman's saying. But those lots are smaller on that side, you know, and going north from there, there's more R2. And that's, makes sense.
And does our council have any comments?
Asking me again, or them?
No, I was asking them.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Since this is a rezoning request, the guidelines that you have are very clear. First of all, if the property has to be not taken out of commerce. And so if it's zoned in a classification where it can be used, as is clearly the case in this one, then you don't have to rezonate. The second thing is if you have a public health and safety reason for the zoning of the property, you don't have to rezonate unless it's just totally taken out of commerce. In this particular case. In this particular case, the, uh, the desire to preserve the character of the community where there are stick-built homes and not have mobile homes introduced into an area where they, they have not previously been, uh, that is a public health and safety concern. And so, you're totally within your rights to deny the rezoning request.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any other comments or questions? And if not, yes, sir, Mr. Dana?
I drove out to the property today. And, uh, if you go down Hemisphere, there's not one trailer, there's not one trailer south on Lee Ellis, one north until you get right at the corner of Forest Lat. They have a, uh, it's more like a manufactured home where you can walk in from the front. But what they were talking about, this property right here, his house is on two lots, and a lot of these houses on Hemisphere, I count only seven, a lot of them on two lots. I don't know why they did that. But they're very big lots and big houses, uh, more than the .6, you know, acres that the, uh, zoning map is saying. But I just wanted to, uh, it, it, a trailer out there, it just doesn't fit. It sticks out like a sore thumb. Every house almost looks uniform as far as the style, 80's style, big, uh, maybe similar to, uh, what's that place in Central? Well, anyway, it don't matter. But very big houses, tree lots. And really, the new house kind of sticks out a little bit, but it is within the, you know, but it's on two lots. So, but just wanted to put that comment in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other comments? Then, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to deny.
Okay. Mr. Dana, do you have a second? All right. Mr. Wax, seconds. Can we have a vote, please? Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Erdy?
Yes.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long? Yes. Okay. 7B, um, it, uh, was denied. Okay, moving on to 7C. We'll go to the public hearing for 7C, Case 25-40 at 29663 South Satsuma Road, parcel number 0237073. It's two lots. And it's, um, going from, um, small, small neighborhood business and AG to R1. Do we have anyone here to represent this particular project? And if, so if you come up and state your name and sign in, please.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Dree, and I'm here to represent my daughter on this particular case, C, and then myself for D. I'm just here in case you guys have any questions.
Does anyone else have anything, any comments? And I presume if we have any, we'll address it. If you have no other statement per se. Okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing and see what, if we have any comments, anything from, uh, Mr. Keen, do you have anything from your department regarding this?
They were just on small neighborhood business all the way down Satsuma Road. And so, they, it's, it's houses. It's two sisters, our sister and mother and daughter. Mother and daughter live next to each other. They both just going to need to be changed to R1.
So, again, a cleanup matter?
Yeah, that's all it is.
Again, okay. Okay. And any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
So, for this first item for 7C, it's 4.95 acres total, but it's two lots. Are we combining the lots into one? Or is it remaining two tracks? And the reason I'm asking is because if it's going to be two tracks, we can't zone a .9 acre track, R1, correct?
But we can, we can clean up what's there, can't we?
I don't know. I don't, I don't think we can vote a .9 acre, something less than an acre. I don't think we can put an R1 designation on it if it's not already.
But we can, I think what we could do, Ms. Sarah, I think we can make the motion to pass it, make the recommendation to the council. And they may have to do a waiver for the .9.
That's, that's what I'm getting at. So, if it's being combined into one, one track, that's not a problem at all. If it's not, then I just want to make sure we've got all the bases covered with it.
The, the solution to this, you have a question on the zoning side and a question on the planning side. The question on the planning side is the size of the lot. So, what they would have to do to develop this piece of property is get it rezoned and then come in on the planning side and redo the plat so that you have a lot that is the size that can be developed with the zoning classification that's been assigned.
Right. So, they won't really be able to do anything with the .9 acre portion of the track until they've gone through planning and addressed the size of that, so...
So, when you...
I, I have no issue with what they're trying to do here. I'm just trying to not put y'all in a bad spot.
But if you rezon it, can it still be non-conforming or it has to go?
It's...
No, it's non-conforming. That's what I'm asking. If you rezon it...
It, it would still be non-conforming because of the size of the lot. But I believe that there is a procedure to come in where you, where one person owns both pieces of property and you're not adding a street or anything else, and you're really just combining two existing lots. I think there's... Yeah, they just change the lot line. And I think that's something that, that planning can do without even the council being involved.
Catherine? All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Clemmons?
Ma'am, if, if we'd like to make certain that you understand exactly what you're asking for, that you're aware that that property will be orphaned.
So, the one that has the .9, this one? All behind it is built.
So, you won't be adding, adding any new development to it?
No, sir.
In that case, you don't have a problem.
As I say, you're just non-conforming with that.
But in the future, if you did, at the stage of getting a permit, that could present a problem where you'd have to change the property lines in order to make it a full acre.
Yes.
In order to be R1.
You just come in and do a lot line and check, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. Um, okay, so, do we have any other questions? And any kind of, um, motion then?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clemmons, beat you, Mr. Burns. Take a vote, please.
I second that motion.
Okay. Clemmons, go ahead.
Well, it, I think it's whichever. I think they're both would agree with you either way. Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Erdy?
Yes.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Abstain.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long? Yes. Now, we will open the public hearing for Item 7D. And that is Case 25-41, 29659 South Satsuma Road, parcel 0237073A. And that is small neighborhood business to R1 and District 1. And it, as we were told, it's the same, uh, it's just the neighbor. So, I think we've probably asked everything we need to know, um, if anybody wants to make a motion.
I'll make the motion. Accept.
Closing the public hearing.
She's going to make a motion.
Yep. Okay. So, the motion, Mr. Norman, second by Ms. Ferris. If you take a vote, please. Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Erdy?
Yes.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Abstain.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long? Yes. Do we have any comments? Yes, sir. If you'll state your name and sign in, if you would, please.
Yeah, my name is Brian Fontno. I live at 35576 Old Highway 16. Um, Ms. Long, I have some packets I'd like to hand out. Would that be okay?
Yes, sir. You sure might. Is your internet being slow as soon? I'm trying to pull up these maps and it's super slow right now. Yeah, very slow.
All right. Good evening. I, I live in Watson. It's my second time in front of this commission for the same issue. I passed it, y'all, out a packet, kind of help you understand what's going on. I'm here for a rezoning request correcting an error in which my single piece of property was zoned in two different categories, C1 and A. My property is bordered on the east by an R2 neighborhood, on the south by 20 acres of R2, and on the west by R1, and on the north side by a small section of C1. After the first meeting on May 1st with this commission, I attended the Master Plan Zoning Code Update Meeting on June 18th at the Live Oak High School. At this meeting, the Future Land Use Map was displayed for the public. I had a conversation with the USP rep, Nathan Lipson, in which he gave me the Character Areas Summary Table, which is included in your packet, and shows my property, according to the map, was in the mixed-use corridor. My property does not meet the requirements stated in Section 117, 235, C1-like commercial that is designed to create high-traffic volume. The parish road cannot accommodate high-traffic volume that commercial developments create. It also does not meet the requirements stated in 117, 135 agriculture, as it's not a farm, a ranch, and it has no marketable timber on it. If you look at the packets I provided in the last meeting, there was some discussion about the traffic volume on a short section of the parish road. Did the research, pulled the 2025, uh, I mean, 2024, uh, traffic data. And, uh, the count in the Wood Acres subdivision, right up the road by the school, inside the subdivision is 1,812 cars a day, where my section of the road itself has 1,491. That's 321 more vehicles in that subdivision than comes down my road. Uh, the road connects to two state highways with the much higher volumes of traffic. Connects on one end, 1019, the other end, 2 LA 16. And the following pages, I marked the peak times of the traffic. It's during the school zones and a little bit the evening rush hour. First map shows the present zoning of my property and the surrounding area. According to the next four maps, the 2013 land use map and the anticipated land use map, my property was designated single-family residential. And nobody but houses and people live on there since 1901, when my grandpa built my grandmother's house. The following 2000, I mean, the following two Lipson Parish Future Land Use Map presented at the Master Plan Zoning Code Update Public Meeting designated my property in a mixed-use corridor. And according to the summary table given by, to me by Nathan Lipson, it allows in the section of 176, 117, 155, R2 medium-density development. It's the only one in the mixed-use category that doesn't require a site plan. That's why I went to Mr. Scooter and said, I asked for R2 before. According to that map, R2 is my only option because I'm asking for a rezoning. I'm not trying to approve a subdivision.
Okay, so, we're, we're good, we're at our, just past our three minutes. Is there anything else that you feel is critical that we need to?
Uh, no, I mean, it's, 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 it's a good spot for it. I mean, it's, I don't see no problem with it. And my neighbors are zoned R2. So, I don't see anybody has any questions for me.
Yeah, that's my understanding is the property adjacent to you is R2 as well.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. And the only difference between my property and theirs is they cut woods off of their property a couple of years ago.
Okay.
And it's just a cut over now.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Do we have any other comments?
I have one question.
Uh, yes, sir. Just let's, if you don't mind. Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Um, uh, from the aerial photo, is that an electrical substation that's on that property?
Yes, there's DMCO substation. My, my property is approximately 30 acres and DMCO bought three of it.
Gotcha.
Long, long time ago.
Gotcha, okay. That was my question.
And that's, kind of messes it up in the front because their server two goes down and it leaves a section on its side that's small.
Gotcha, okay.
That substation is recently constructed and the feeder line going to it cuts off across Highway 16, right behind Mandy's Center there, the, uh, Medical Center.
Brian, what did you say? I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. I apologize.
It's a recently constructed substation there.
A substation?
Yes.
No.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm going to speak. I say refurbished, rather.
Yeah, refurbished.
With a new feeder line.
I worked there 35 and a half years and it's been there.
Yeah.
Before me.
They redid the line from across the river.
Sure.
And then they took out the back of it and went to the Richmond's with a new line.
I know where you're at. Thank you.
The refurbishment, yes.
Yeah, they just changed the poles out.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. If you state your name and sign in, please.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Chad Lane. Uh, live next door to Brian. Address is 35484, Old LA Highway 16. This is my first meeting to, uh, come to. And like Brian was saying, our land is next to his and it's zoned different than his. Ours is R2, his is A. But where our house is located is commercial. They're trying to make it commercial, which I don't understand how you could divide part of our land up that's been in my wife's family for over 100 years. That would be my question.
Okay. I think that's one of those issues that when we talked about cleaning something up, because when they look at a broad spectrum of the entire parish, it's very difficult to pinpoint individual locations. And so, we are having to go through this process. They, this is a fluid document and there are going to be changes. There'll always be some changes and requests. But what happens is they had to have a cutoff date. And many of you were told, people that are trying to, were changing, they were told, we've got to cut it off. This was in March. And come back, go through this process. So you can certainly present that to the department, and you'll do much the same as Brian's doing. And you make the request, and then, you know, feasibly what you're stating, it, it seems like a feasible thing to try to do. So you just have to go through the department, if you'll contact them, please.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much. Any other public comments? Close the hearing. Do you have any comments? Could you, I, I would like, Mr. Keen, if you would address, because I understood as well that this has been designated multiple things by WSP at different times. And I'm, I'm interested as to why the different transitions don't seem to be, it, it seems to be one of those things, again, that's gotten caught up into something, because just looking at it to plop a, you know, ag right there seems unrealistic, and-
Yeah, I can't really answer to the facts of why it was changed so many times, but you said it's fluid. So from the first time Mr. Fontno came in, we looked at this, and that whole road was zoned C1 along the road, and there's no commercial there whatsoever. So I called Nathan, I said, Nathan, what's the deal here? I think I even asked Mr. Steve, can we just change this? And he goes, no, you can't just change it, because we zoned it that, but it was a mistake that they were thinking they were looking at Highway 16, not Old 16.
Okay, gotcha.
And so we can't just go and just, we could've done a comprehensive change if everybody wanted to do it, same thing on Cochrane. It would, but it would've just changed it all at one time. Uh, and we just said, no, a lot of the people, like Mr. David Tate lives right across the street, and he said, I don't care what mine's on, doesn't matter, you know? Mr. Fontno's being one piece, zoned two things, that was another mistake. But it wasn't WSP's fault, because on the assessor's site, it showed them as separate properties. They had, the lines weren't right.
Weren't correct.
Yeah, and, and like you said, they, they zoned this huge parish, and then they were getting down to crunch time, and they're like, well, we gotta get through, there's gotta be zoning. And so there's, there's plenty of this all, all across the parish that needs cleanup. He's correct, though, in the last iteration of the future suggested land use, it was pink for mixed-use, um, his property, I'm not sure how many other ones there. I think it came all the way down past the other gentleman's property, too, so that, you know, they could put it however they wanted it.
Then 300 feet of Highway 16, I believe.
Of 16, yeah. And so-
So basically, with the next, the property adjacent to it immediately-
The 20 acres, yeah.
Is something totally different.
His R2.
Right, and, and that's what he's requesting, so-
Right.
It would seem logical, yes.
So I'm looking at the copy of the master plan, which is, we're talking about a master plan that hasn't officially been adopted yet, but I think it's still prudent for us to consider so we don't create more problems for ourselves. But I'm looking at the copy that we received today, which was completely unrelated to this request, but the map to me looks different in the one that I was sent today versus the one in this packet. I don't see any pink, any mixed-use in this area. I see only rural estate.
It would've had to been asked to be changed after that meeting at Live Oak, at Live Oak High.
And that's, that's on the same, um, yes, so this is, this is the, the public meeting map that Mr. Fontno gave us. The one that's in the master plan today, which is not adopted, but neither, neither this nor what was emailed to us are kind of binding on us, just, you know, good, good information to take into account. But it appears to be rural estates. Rural estates would be ag and R1. So for, for whatever that's worth, we still have a bit of-
What is the one south of there showing it as it's R2 at this time? Is it also rural estates?
It, it really looks like that whole, that whole stretch, which-
Which is-
Probably can't be correct, because some of that has to be something other than rural estates.
Right.
Correct.
But it's, I don't think either of these is gonna give us a hard and fast answer of what the right thing to do is here, because they're in conflict.
Right, and, and to have things, like you say, two different things, and that is an understandable reason. But, um, I mean, WSP definitely stated that they knew things had to be addressed. And so that's why this is, of course, taking place, and, um-
That's why we're in interim zoning.
Correct, exactly. 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 So, um, but when, when you just glance at this, the thought of it being ag right in the middle of everything else seems most definitely odd. And, um, you know, I don't know what the other commissioners have, any comments on that, but it doesn't seem consistent. And, um, um, yes, sir?
Comments? This came to us first time asking for R2. And we looked at it and made the recommendation that R2 really wasn't the best use, and thought that R1.5 might be the best use. And the request was withdrawn at that time. And so we started to work on changing and reintroducing R.1.5 as being a valid zone again for this particular one. And we did go through that process. So now that we've got R1.5 reinstated for you, you've come back and asked for R.2.0 again. And at the time, when it was first introduced, we weren't really thrilled with the idea of having half-acre lots right there and increasing the house density at that point.
Mr. Brian, if you would mind, use the word "we" lightly. Just, we didn't agree to everything.
No.
Please, thank you.
I say, rather, there was some discussion, and, and he was asked, would he consider bringing it back and let us re-introduce R1.5?
Comment, uh, Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, in, in regards to what Mr. Clemmons has said, uh, we had a lengthy discussion with, uh, Mr. Brian, and I know some members of the zoning commission asked him to wait to one, uh, R1.5 was approved by the council. We did not do that, okay? That was only a couple of you guys that done that. But he, he talked about 1.5, now 1.5 is approved by the council as R2. It is not our job to convince him to go back to 1.5. If he wants R2, then that's, that is the issue before us, okay? Not 1.5. Um, I, I went up and down that road several times, uh, the old Highway 16 from present, new Highway 16, all the way back to the corner of 1019 several times. What I see is primarily residential. I don't see any commercial except on both ends of it. So residential fits in. Now, on his particular piece of property that he's asking, the boat property, he's asking us to change, on the southeast end, there is the subdivision there that's already R2. R2 already joins this property. And if you go across the old 16 down maybe 300, 400 feet, there's another major subdivision in there, it's an old one, and it's all R2. And I stopped and looked, and basically looked at the lots, and those lots in there are 100 feet wide. So that fits in with R2, okay? So what he's asking us to do is to change it to R2. And my personal opinion is that I don't see a problem with him asking for that, and I think it fits in with the community. And that's my opinion.
And I think it, it is accurate that you have the privilege to, to ask for whatever you have decided when you came to us at this time. You did withdraw your request, and so any conversation that took place at the time was simply that, conversation, there were no decisions made. So, um, any other commission comments?
Yes, uh, I'm looking at it right here, that, almost the entire property flooded in 2016, with the exception of a little bit by the road per ArcGIS August 2016. The average is one and a half to two and a half foot.
Okay, if I can make a comment, but I, I'm sorry.
This is, I don't know if you, I don't know if you went out there on the crest or before, but I, I'm very familiar with the flood. You know, when you have five feet in your house and everything's ripped out and thrown on the road, and, and, and your grandmother and your sister who didn't even need flood insurance flooded, you pay very close attention. I'm very alert to this, and this ArcGIS map has never lied. Now, in the front-
That's, that map is based on a study, sir.
I can tell you, I've been in my house, in my yard-
Wait, I don't think this is, first of all, it has no bearing. Um, zoning, that would be addressed with planning, that if they had to do anything for, um, to, you know, mitigate or do anything regarding the, the elevations, that would be addressed at that time. And so if I can ask you gentlemen to, if you'll have a seat, please? And, um, you know, I'd like, I, I, it's not that it's a valid point, it's, it's certain. Well, that's really not a bearing right now.
This is GIS map.
I think we need to stick with our zoning, um, but it, um, so I think we need to move forward if, if Mr. Erdy was next.
I got, I do have one question, um, for Mr. Fontno.
Just one minute, if you don't mind.
Mr. Fontno, do you mind answering it? You mentioned earlier, you, you said something about, one of the reasons that you were asking for, what you're asking for was because it doesn't require any kind of a site plan? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir, when I talked to Nathan at the meeting, and he pointed out the map, the proposed land use map, which put my property in the surrounding area in mixed-use category. Mixed-use category requires a site plan for everything but R2 for zoning. You can't get zoning anything mixed-use without bringing forth a plan. The R4, the R5, the C1, the light industrial, it's all in the mixed-use, you had to have a site plan. R2 for zoning, you don't have to have a site plan. You do if you're gonna try to develop.
Yeah, I guess that's what I wanted to make sure that you were on that, you were on the right page there.
That's why I wanted to go R2.
If you're gonna go develop it, you will. I didn't want you to misunderstand.
Yeah, didn't want, yeah, to clarify.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. And Mr. Erdy, you've been trying, sir.
Yeah, my only question, is there, there's no conflict with rezoning it to R2 with that, uh, power substation on the pro-
No.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Seconded by Mr. Burns. Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
No.
Mr. Erdy?
Epstein.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Danna?
No.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
No.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Pass. And that item passes. I'm sorry, did you, I'm sorry, I thought you said pass. Yeah. Okay. And one of them staying, so, okay. So that item passes. Okay, we'll move on to any comments by the attorney, sir? Do you have anything for us? Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, and, and Morgan, I'm assuming you don't have anything? And anything from the planning department? Okay, we are going to adjourn this meeting, and we're gonna give them a moment to reset if anyone needs to take a break.